Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. My name is Brian Hashi and I serve as Chair of this board. A quorum is present and a meeting is therefore called to order. First, I'd like to welcome the Planning Board from the town of Westwood, which is here to speak to an agenda item. And Sarah Bouchard has some comments.
Sure. So first of all, welcome. I just want to give you an introduction to our technology setup here. I understand it may be a little unfamiliar to you. So we operate a hybrid meeting. Folks have the opportunity to participate remotely. The gray camera that you see on the square table right here in front of you. This is called the Owl Camera. It has a microphone in it and it has a camera. The way it works is that as it detects sound, it turns and looks at the direction where the sound is coming from so that it can film, you know, and provide visual. There are a couple of things to keep in mind about that. Try not to talk at the same time as other folks and make sure you're speaking clearly and mildly so that our folks at home can hear and understand. One limitation about the Owl is that because it relies on the direction of your voice, it limits our ability to use microphones and speakers in here to amplify sound for folks in the audience. So when you speak, just be especially mindful of projecting because we aren't able to amplify your voice in this room and still have folks be able to see and hear you. The meeting is being recorded. Norwood Community Media is here to broadcast. And I think that's all my housekeeping. Make sure you watch your step on your way in and out because there are a lot of wires here. But otherwise, we're happy to have you. Welcome. Turn back over to the chair.
Thank you. So just to, a little bit of ground rules. Tonight's proceeding will go as follows. Public hearings will be opened by reading the legal notice into the record. The applicant will have opportunity to make their presentation to the board. Board members may then ask questions of the applicant. Once the board has concluded questioning, we will open the hearing to the public for comments. All members of the public in attendance who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record and speak loudly for all to hear. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair and I will call upon board members and/or the applicant as needed to respond. The board will then move into a period of deliberation which will then determine whether or not the meeting will be closed to the public and moved to a vote or to continue the public hearing to a later date. The first agenda item tonight is a request for site plan approval regarding Everett Street in Norwood and 425 Providence Highway in Westwood, the Mercedes-Benz of Westwood car dealership. And this is a joint meeting with the Westwood Planning Board.
Do they have a legal notice to read?
They have a legal notice?
Yeah, we have to open our meeting. Thank you very much. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board meeting. This meeting will be filmed by Norwood Community Media and the video recording will be shared with Western Media Center, WMC. A recording of this meeting will then be made available on WMC's YouTube and local government channels, Comcast Channel 12 and Verizon Channel 42. If anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware. Seeing none. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. In the event of a disruption, the chair will give a warning the first time and if it occurs again, the individual will be ordered to leave the meeting. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments. The board members will ask questions of the applicant. For public hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment. Items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board. When it is time for the public comment period, the chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the chair. All people will given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. Thank you for coming to our meeting. Nora, do I need to just take a roll call attendance?
Yes, and then read the legal notice.
I have it on my phone. All right. We'll take a roll call. Thank you. We'll take a roll call vote. Josh?
Aye.
Chris?
Here.
Kate?
Here.
And I, Ellen Rawlings, am here. The Westwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 22, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062, regarding an application filed by Shane Oates of Independence Engineering, LLC, requesting environmental impact and design review, EIDR, approval pursuant to Section 7.3 of the Westwood Zoning Bylaw to permit demolition and reconstruction of portions of the existing Mercedes-Benz dealership as well as reconfiguring and reconstruction of a portion of the existing parking lot, sidewalk and drive aisles, and alterations to landscaping at 425 Providence Highway, Westwood, Mass., 02090, and Everett Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062. The portion of this property which lies in Westwood is within the Highway Business HB zoning district. Land affected, Assessors Map 23, Lot 230. Property owner, AMR Real Estate Holdings, LLC. This initial public hearing will be held simultaneously with the meeting of the Norwood Planning Board to consider a request for site plan approval of the same project. Plans and applications are available for viewing on the town's website under current applications. Link for the Planning Board at www.westwoodpermit.org. Final meeting agenda and Zoom information will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage three to five days in advance at Interested persons are encouraged to attend the public hearing and make their views known to the Planning Board. Participation may be in person or remote through the following link: Do I need to continue reading the phone numbers? Okay. Terrific.
So I believe that we'd be asking the applicant to make the presentation.
Thank you, chairpersons, for each board. And I want to really thank the boards. My name is Paula Devereaux. I'm an attorney at Pierce Outwood in Boston and I'm here representing AMR with respect to the matter that's before you. My for-site plan would be in Norwood, EIDR, in Westwood. And I do want to thank both boards for agreeing to have this joint public hearing rather than have us keep going back and forth to each town, especially as you hear what we're proposing to do. This is the existing Mercedes-Benz of Westwood, which is on Glacier Drive and Everett, Norwood, Glacier, and Westwood. And the property is bisected by the town line. Most of the building is in Westwood and a lot of the parking is in Norwood. We are here basically to upgrade the showroom and to make some changes to the building. And with me is Shane Oates, who can go through with you in detail what the changes are. So thank you.
Do you have the color plan?
Good evening. Shane Oates with Independence Engineering. How are you? So I'm just going to briefly go through one of our renderings that shows the site and the proposed building. So this is the existing site. I'm just going to give everyone an overall layout. This is the town line with Norwood to the south, Westwood to the north. The existing building, front facade, is right here in this dashed line. And you'll see the colored version. That's the new building, the front facade, the showroom, new vehicle delivery service and reception, as well as being shifted, but in generally the same location. So as part of this process, as far as the site is related, we're reconfiguring some parking. You'll know there is a little circle out in the front of the existing facility right now. We're reconfiguring that area. That's where most of the reconfiguration is. There'll be a new access aisle that aligns with both driveways, which will make the site a lot cleaner. New parking here to the south and to the east as well. And some additional landscaping, which I'm sure the board will have some questions about. We're utilizing all existing service utilities right now. There'll be some new, be revised or relocated sewer laterals. And as part of the project, there's a net increase in building area of approximately 8,500 square feet. So what we're doing with that additional building increase is we are proposing to recharge that entire roof runoff into the ground with some recharge facilities out in front of the new building. I think that's really just a quick summary of everything we're doing here. So if anyone has any questions related to the site, if not, we can show a couple of elevation views of the new building from Everett and from Glacier.
Could you tell us where the changes are? Especially, I'm thinking on the Norwood side. Is there additional parking now?
So there's actually a net reduction in parking of about 30 to 40 spaces on the site. So yeah, the new parking is basically here, out to the south and to the east of the site.
And what did it, do you have what it looks like now before the change?
Yeah. We'll just look at the existing condition. It's the last sheet of that. So you can see, this is the existing circle that's on the site with parking around it. The front entryway is right off of that circle. So you can see, this is being removed. This is kind of, we're utilizing this new driveway access. This parking is going away. That'll be some landscaping, revising the parking up in this southern area as well where the existing drainage facilities are. So also, the new building will come down here. So there'll be some removal of parking spaces to the north. But like I said, there's a net decrease of about 30 to 40 parking spaces. As far as the drainage do, I wanted just to point out there is a net reduction in impervious areas on site of about 2,500 square feet. Not a lot, but you know, as a redevelopment project, we feel like we put all that 100-year storm from the roof right back into the ground. So we're definitely improving existing site conditions.
On the eastern side, how is the building changing there? Or is it?
Right here?
Yes.
That's where the entire change is.
And how far out does that go?
Can we go back to the color plan? So you can see, see the stashed red line here? This is the existing face of the building. Here's service right now. Here's the showroom right now and the front entrance, right there.
Are we hanging over the line?
Yes.
We're hanging over the line.
A small portion of the new face of the building will be in Norwood.
I knew that was coming.
Yes, I got a question. So there is a comment that the, Derek, me, sorry. The building commissioner had raised a question regarding the number of 88 parking spaces. And looking at the C400, the new layout, I'm seeing three being marked out. So it's a comment, and I agree that there's no chart showing the total, the requirements and accessible.
Sure. Our revised plans will indicate we'll put a parking summary table on the plans. It's part of that. So we're still awaiting peer review comments on the project right now. Once we receive that, we anticipate making a submittal with revised documents. We also need to go to Conservation Commission in Westwood. And we will ultimately need to go in front of the zoning board to modify their existing special permit in Westwood. So there's still, you know, these plans will be revised accordingly.
I just had a question on the parking in the building. You're going to have a larger building, but you're knocking off some spaces. And are you carrying less inventory? How does that work out?
Yeah, ultimately, there'll be less available spaces for inventory. The required parking space is based on the use and the building size is under 100. So we're far in excess of that. I think I actually have that number. I think the existing spaces, once this is instituted, will be 463. And the required requirement is 97. So.
We're not, I just wanted to interrupt just for a second. We're not changing any of the entrances. And in 2008, when the Everett Street property was added to this property, there was a condition that there be a gate on the accessways. And if you could point it out.
Right here.
And that is, we're not planning on changing that. There's no change of use. It's still going to be Mercedes.
The purpose of the gate, is that for emergency or?
Yes, it was for emergency, but nobody, but people didn't want that to become a main accessway. And the main accessway is actually off Glacier Drive in Westwood. I mean, they still do use one in Everett, but I guess at the time, they didn't want two accessways.
Thank you.
We've also received, we've received comments from Sarah and from Mark Ryan. And we plan on addressing all those comments with our revised submission as well. So we've gone through them in detail. I've spoken with Sarah about that already. Utility-related comments, landscaping-related comments especially.
I have a kind of unrelated question since we have Westwood here. Since you're not allowed to store cars in Westwood, correct? Where does their extra inventory go?
They do store cars.
Well, on this particular lot, right? But your overflow goes where? It has nothing to do with this piece of property. I'm just curious.
This is kind of an overflow vehicle storage area back here. The access is in Norwood and the car storage is in Westwood, basically. The majority of the space is on. Nothing's changing there.
I'll open it up to questions from Westwood Planning Board.
They took mine.
Sorry. You can expand upon.
No, that was done. Well done.
I'd like to understand the flow for pedestrians on the property.
Sure. So the proposed improvements, there will be access through a sidewalk along here, along the front. And basically, everything else is just parking. So the pedestrian traffic flow shouldn't change that much, just the front of the building. So, and obviously, the entrance. So there'll be a service entrance here to the north of the showroom and then to the south of the showroom as well.
So thank you for that. I think I just see one crosswalk. Is that right? Do I even see a crosswalk?
This is an existing sidewalk right here to get from this parking area over to the showroom, to the building entrance. That's existing.
And is there?
Our portion of it is. We will be extending it.
Is there a marked spot on the pavement for people to walk on? Is my question.
Oh, we can add a crosswalk there.
Yeah. I'm in favor of making it clear where the people should be walking.
Sure.
Around a lot of cars.
Yeah, we can show some crosswalks.
Thank you.
Perhaps I missed it on the parking plan. EV charging spots? Have you guys incorporated any of those?
So we will be.
But EV is not on the current?
They're not on the current plan, but we will be incorporating them, absolutely. We've spoken with Norwood about that already.
All right. Awesome. About how many? Is it a percentage?
I'm not sure if we've determined. We can, we'll work that out, obviously. Whatever the town would like to see, I'm sure we can accommodate it.
And we'll also be accommodating Mercedes requirements with that. And not a lot of car. People are automotive companies who are switching to show and electric vehicles.
I actually have a question. I, you caught my interest when you mentioned you were going to be improving the drainage and the stormwater runoff. Could you give me a little detail about what you're planning?
So right now, there is existing subsurface infiltration storage and recharge right here to the south of the site. And that was shown on the, can we go back to the survey quickly, Sarah? Yeah, right in this area. So the entire site basically drains through there, goes through some proprietary cleaning devices. It's stored there and then it goes offsite. So what we're going to do, let me go back to our topic. Is we're taking the net increase in building area, which is 8,500 square feet, even though the site has 2,500 square feet less impervious after this is built. We're taking this 8,500-square-foot increase in roof runoff, which is clean, and we're directly recharging it back into the ground using modern subsurface structures. As a redevelopment project, you're required to at least try to improve the site if you can.
Thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues?
Yeah, I was just curious. You said there was infiltration protection, groundwater separator or like oil separators? What's currently existing? And are you planning to improve anything there?
So the existing system will remain as is. We're just treating new roof runoff. We're just considering clean. So we won't, we won't have like a storm sear or any type of device like that. It'll just go from roof leaders directly right into those chambers. And they've been sized to accommodate the 100-year storm, so they're relatively oversized.
I got another question, parking. How many total parking spaces would you have when all this is done?
Okay, I can redo this. So this, the lot currently has 495 total parking spaces with the large circular area at the front of the building included in that. It's 470 without that little circle, which is sometimes occupied, sometimes not.
So when everything's all said and done? On this new plan?
On the new plan, we'll be down to 463.
Okay. So according to Table 28.2, parking spaces with the 88 standards, you need nine.
Yeah, we'll end up having to add some of those.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that was clear.
Oh, of course.
Any comments from Westwood's staff?
Yeah, so we had sent out for peer review with our engineering group, Beta Group. They are to review the site and give the necessary comments as it relates to the stormwater management and any site plan analysis. And they will be reviewing this meeting afterwards.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Sarah, do you have any comments?
Sure. Just for this group, I think it might be helpful to read into the record some of the requests that our town engineer made of the plans. So I'll go through these briefly. We requested, number one, show room and advert elevations in all utilities. Show location and size of all utilities in their entirety. Provide inspection courts on the planned view on all end units for the proposed subsurface infiltration facility A and B. The proposed cleanout prior to subsurface infiltration facility A and B shall be changed to drain manhole. Provide overflow pipes from subsurface infiltration facility A and B. Provide drain profiles. Label the proposed sewer cleanout on sheet C600 for existing service exiting the proposed addition. Show sewer easement of main sewer trunk line through property. Provide tree replanting detail. Provide vituinous concrete curbing detail and highlight the proposed building addition on sheet C300. So mostly changes to what's indicated on the plan. But just to confirm, the applicant has agreed to make all of those changes.
Yes.
And then there are remaining concerns. We're largely related to landscaping, which again, in my conversations with Shane, it sounds like are amenable to making those changes. Mostly plan notations in Norwood, at least. The shrubs have to be 30 inches in height at time of planting. There's a note about maintenance that contradicts our bylaw. All landscaping, not just the required trees, are required to be maintained with all dead limbs removed and dead plantings replaced at the earliest appropriate season with plants of equal or better quality. A minimum of 5% of the interior area of the lot must be landscaped. Two trees, six shrubs for 1,500 square feet, a parking lot, which I think this meets, but I'd like to see the calculations. Maintenance of plantings around the building. Again, the current notes is that occurs at the discretion of the owner and our bylaw requires it. New shrubs and trees, and this is kind of the bigger ones, require to be native species, which this plan does not propose. So we also require a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees, evergreen and flowering perennial shrubs, and colorful seasonal, annual and perennial flowers. Our bylaw does request that they be colorful. So right now, the landscaping plan as proposed doesn't meet that standard. I understand that the plan referenced these plants to be in keeping with the existing plantings on the Westwood side of the property. So I suspect the intention there was to keep some consistency. I think it would be helpful for these two boards to have a conversation about what their expectations are for generally that schedule of plantings because I think it could be a business match if they're all native on our side and they continue to be similar plantings on the others. So I'd like you to talk about that a little bit more and at least try to make some commitments that we can potentially include as conditions of approval.
Sure.
Are you able to make those changes?
Yes. Yeah, of course we are. Yep. Yeah, so I think maybe we can, we'll go back through, especially the Norwood bylaw requirements and, you know, maybe a good mixture of both to present with our next submission. We can submit that to both towns for a quick review to see how the new landscaping layout looks and all our comments.
For the record, we, this board, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, but we are big fans of native plants as well. So, and we tend to ask for that in our conditions as well. So I think we would be in favor of that as well to bash your bylaw.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that better aligns with the sustainability bylaw that we just passed, so.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, to the atmosphere. So I know you have access to our permitting system online. There were some comments from the building department as it relates to the square footage of the coverage of the site. It is over the 80% impervious surface. So you would have to, you know, apply for variance if you do not change that to meet that standard.
So that's a, I think that's a pre-existing non-conformity because we have a reduction in impervious areas as a result of this design of 2,500 square feet. So I'm not, you know, I'll have to kind of calculate where that 83.3% comes from. And maybe I can give him a call and find out.
Yes. Yeah. He's already reached out to the building commissioner.
Yeah, of course.
There was, I just wanted to leave a record. There was a variance that was issued for the property in 2008. And we had, and it was also a special permit. Both were issued by the zoning board of appeals. And we fully expect to have to go back to the zoning board of appeals for at least an amendment to what had been granted before. And we think that impervious is, exists, was existing, and we're not really changing that. So Shane will reach out to the building inspector and get a better handle on that question. May I?
Yes. Go ahead.
Because the impervious, you're expanding the size of the building, but you're going to have less coverage.
Right.
Is that because that circle's coming out?
Partially. It's because of the reconfiguration of the parking areas. There's more islands and grass and land.
The Norwood part seems to be getting all the, we have all the impervious surface, which, I'm not throwing stones, guys. But do we combine, like this gentleman just said, your pre-existing non-conforming, you're increasing, you're increasing your coverage, but not, you know, you're decreasing? Do we combine Westwood/Norwood's property as one? Does that make any sense?
We do in Westwood. In Westwood, we treat all the zoning requirements as if they, as if the property was in one municipality.
Okay. So you're doing your square footage based on the piece that's Norwood and the piece that's?
We are.
Okay. I'm an active challenge, so I appreciate that.
And the same is true in Norwood.
Is?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know that I've ever run into this before.
We don't, yeah. So I checked with the building commissioner just to confirm how he would interpret it. And it's the same. We can't obviously control anything over the town line. We can only condition approval, you know, for our side of the line. But when it comes to making calculations for what the requirements are, we look at the whole property.
And we did have a preliminary meeting with the building commissioner. And we did have a preliminary meeting with the building commissioners of BoTowns, and the Norwood building commissioner confirmed to the Westwood building commissioner that because most of the building and only a tiny little piece of it is in Norwood, the building inspector of Norwood is going to rely on the building inspector from Westwood to look at code issues, building code issues, so. And I think everybody was in agreement with that.
So Sarah, with regard to the site plan approval here in Norwood, is it premature to see if the board wishes to take action or do we want to wait for revised plans?
I think that's a decision of the board to make. I think my recommendation based on what I'm hearing tonight is that the applicant is amenable to all the changes that were requested by our town engineer, who is satisfied with the stormwater.
So can we handle by conditions on approval?
I think you could issue a conditional approval with a condition requiring final plans addressing all the outstanding items listed as conditions be provided to myself, the town engineer, and the building commissioner for final administrative review. If the changes on the plan that result as of the culmination of the process with the Westwood Planning Board, if those are major in nature, we can bring it back to the planning board for final review.
Apart from the insertions of the engineering specifics on the plants, the landscaping, it sounds like there's a very reasonable chance that they.
You have a history of being able to, to issue conditional approval based on satisfactory landscaping plans being provided to the.
So the Norwood board, is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to approve with the, the conditions that we've spoken about, the conditions, one being what's the memorandum to Sarah Bouchard from MacRaeon on May second, two thousand and twenty-three, and one through eleven. That should handle that, and then also that we would be getting a landscape plan.
So I have some conditions on your memo.
Sure.
Would you like to read them or would you like?
Sure. So the conditions that are being suggested. Is it these three, on page three?
Yes.
Okay. So the suggested conditions are after installation, that part? After installation, a letter shall be provided to the community development department by a registered landscape architect certifying that all plantings are in compliance with the approved landscape plan, that all landscaping, both existing and proposed, shall be maintained. If any landscape plantings die, they shall be replaced in season with the same or better quality plantings, and that final plans addressing outstanding items required by the town engineer in his memo must be provided to the director of community development and town engineer for administrative review and approval prior to issuance of a building permit. So Joe.
Add those, yes, those are part of the condition.
That's, that's part of the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Four-zero?
One more question?
Of course.
So we're doing concrete curb, is that just inside the site or is that along Everett?
Just inside the site, there's no changes along Everett Street.
And as for the building permit, we have to give the building permit?
We have to open it to public comment, because it's a public hearing.
Well, it says prior to issuance of building permit. Number two, they have to get a building?
Yes.
Okay. All right, okay.
So I understand the Westwood planning board needs to take, take their action.
We do, first, as it is a public hearing for us, I just want to open it up to any comments or questions from the public. I don't know, do you get questions from Zoom?
Anybody online is encouraged to speak up now or use the raise hand feature to be recognized. I don't see any raises.
Perfect. All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to continue our public hearing.
Till when? I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until Westwood Planning Board meeting on June, Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven PM via Zoom. The Zoom link and associated call-in numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www.townhall.westwood MA.us forward slash.
Second. I have a motion in a second, can I just take a, an up or down vote since we're in person? Awesome, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, and I will take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, thank you very much for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome back. So the next agenda item is a request for site plan approval modification, seven oh seven Naponton Street, Timothy J. Power and David J. Hearn for the applicant.
David Hearn, no middle initial.
No middle initial, my apologies, turn here.
And J. isn't it, but that's already, it happens all the time.
Oh, did I, did I, I didn't even, there wasn't even one written, I just.
People really, people do that all the time.
I, I, you know what it is, I forgot to put my, my glasses on. My apologies.
Good evening, members of the board, for the record, David Hearn Jr., thirty Wallpole Street. I'm here on behalf of Norwood Gulf, which is actually Goddess and Joseph, Inc. With me this evening, Philie Majori, who's the principal of that business, and Tim Power of PBI Site Design, which I ran in Maryland. You may recall that on February thirteenth of this year, we met with you and the board voted to issue site plan approval with respect to Mr. Majori's expansion of a parking area at the Norwood Gulf, which is at seven oh seven Naponton Street here in Norwood. That was an expansion that had previously been approved by the zoning board. The property is in a residential district, but it's a, it's been used for decades as a commercial enterprise. Mr. Majori is the, one of the companies in his family controls, is the owner of the property, and Dustin Williams Real T L C, Goddess and Joseph, Inc., is the operating company for the service station which sells gasoline, does automobile and other vehicle repairs, and also does vehicle inspections for the registry of motor vehicles. So the project that was approved by the zoning board was the expansion of the parking area into some adjacent undeveloped land that is actually part and has always been part of this lot. And that was approved, and it had to go to the zoning board because it was an alteration or expansion of a non-conforming area. That was approved, then we came here for site plan approval. In a nutshell, what Mr. Majori was doing and has been doing since he got the approvals from your board and the zoning board is to expand that parking area, pave it, put up a fence around it to shield it from the residential neighbors on Ridge Road, both on the side, the right-hand side of the property, as you look at the property from Naponton Street, as well as to the rear of the property, there is a house on Ridge Road that abuts this property in the area where the expansion occurred. He has paved the area and he's been doing more paving on the site over the last couple of days and has installed fences, as I said, around the expansion area. And when we came before you in February, among the provisions of your approval were, was the approval of a landscape plan. Now, that landscape plan called out for all kinds of plants, seventy-two, I think, of creeping juniper, for example, were to, called for on the plan. Since the construction work has begun, Mr. Majori has determined that, from his point of view, it would be better if we, if he changed what the landscaping was going to be. And from the point of view of eliminating some of the plants that were proposed to be put in as ground cover and replacing that with sawd, which will have irrigation. All of this ground cover that we're talking about is within the fence. It's not on the outside of the fence where it would be visible to the neighbors. So it's not at all visible, the area we're talking about, to the director butters in back or to the folks on Ridge Road or anybody driving along from the rotary on Naponton, toward Naponton Street and Naponton, the Norwood Gulf property. Inside the fence is the area where he wants to replace some of the ground cover with sawd. And that would be visible possibly if you were on Naponton Street and looked to your right as you drove by, or if you were coming from, say, the Route ninety-five end of Naponton Street back towards Route one and looked to your left as you drove by. Could be visible, except that, that parking lot has cars in. And when cars are there, as they expect to be a good part of the time, there are cars that will be there for customers, dropping them off for service, waiting on service. So there's likely to be cars there, because people often drop their cars off the day before they're going to be serviced. You can't really see the area in question. The, some of the plants that were called for on further reflection are the types of plants that, while they might be effective as ground cover, will also be very effective at trapping leaves and debris, trash and stuff like that, and have the potential also to grow over onto the area where the cars are parked and, and it's, and they're on a wall, is how, Tom, Tim?
The curb.
The curb, I mean, in the back of the, the, going back.
Yeah.
Area, they could, I'm talking about growing over that area.
Yeah, just the curb, six inches or so.
So the concern there is that if it looked neater, it would look better, it would be easier to maintain if we could switch out some of the ground cover, replace it with sawd. And the irrigation is, I think, partially in place now. None of the bushes or the trees that are called out in the plan that you approved would be removed. It's the ground cover. And I'll let Mr. Power explain in greater detail, he's brought some boards for us to look at, but we're happy to take your questions on it. We're here because this is a modification of what you approved and it's really something that has come to Mr. Majori's attention in the course of doing the construction work, that just having these plants there will be more trouble, will be more difficult to keep looking neat, which is, I think, one of the things you're looking for. And really will not add anything, they will not be visible to most people going by the site. They're certainly not visible to the people who live on Ridge Road or because they're all within the, the fencing. Now, I, I know that there was a memorandum from the planning director and I saw that on, I think it was a Friday, Tuesday or Friday, and it makes a recommendation that we aim for, that, you know, this has already gone through a significant review process. I know that when we were at the zoning board, they wanted to make sure that the outside of the fence looked good. Whatever trees are called for there, whatever bushes are called for there, will be there as well as sawd, which was not otherwise called for. And none of the ground cover on that plan that was approved was outside of the fence on that side. So we think we're making an improvement on the side where it's viewed, can be viewed by the neighbors. And I, you know, I know that someone will say, well, this is a plan the applicant submitted. It is the plan the applicant submitted, but on further reflection, in the middle of construction and looking more at what this is, creeping junipers and things like that are likely to cause more problems, lead to a more unsightlyness than if you allow it to be switched to sawd, that will be mowed regularly, that will be cared for, irrigated, and it's much easier to keep clean. So, Tim, if you want to take us through the.
Sure.
What you have?
Sure. I forgot my easel, I apologize, so. Chair here.
What do you want, what's best, best luck to put in for the?
Are these in the packet that you submitted? I really prefer them to be digital so that we can make sure folks at home can see. Otherwise, it'll be really challenging.
We do, I did send one late, because it's just, it's nothing more than color on the plan provided.
Did you email them to me?
I did, earlier today, so.
Okay. Just give me a second before we start.
I'm mostly just going to walk through where the ground cover was. Okay. So again, this is just basic color plan, trees and shrubs that are remaining, you can see on this plan. The fence goes around the perimeter of the property here that David was mentioning. And then the ground cover was really a portion of the, up against the curb here that goes around and here, so sort of, you know, under typical mulch bed type plantings, under the shrubs. So we're going to replace that with the sawd. Never went around the fence on this side, this was just a handful of shrubs. And then on this, onto the neighbor on this side was inside the fence there. Go through the actual ground cover type we need to, but sort of as a blanket, all ground cover was taken out, replaced with sawd.
Is all of these plantings, this is the fence, this double line, correct? So the plantings are on the outside of the fence, on facing the Cadillac dealer, correct?
Yes, they're here.
Not on the outside, the plantings would be on the inside. There are shrubs at the corner near Ridge Road.
But this isn't the fence, right, it says lawn, where's, I, I have pictures, because I went down yesterday. Is this solid black line the fence?
Yeah, there are six shrubs.
No, it says fence. It said double, double line, help me.
Double line is the curb, this line with little squares is the fence.
Oh, okay.
So you got this, six shrubs outside on Ridge Road, and then all the other shrubs and plantings are inside the fence. That's here, what else? So what, these six shrubs are just outside the fence on Ridge Road.
Those are unchanged, I think.
Unchanged, yeah, no change.
That's all was approved.
Yep, that was approved and now they'll stay. Again, the only change we're asking for is the actual ground surface cover to be approved. All the shrubs that come up three, four feet stay, all the trees stay, no changes to any of that. Yes.
And in the front, there's, there's no fence in the front, just on the side?
Correct, and on the rear, so.
And that has grass, no matter what, there's no change there?
Correct, and the front is the two trees and was always lawn, proposed as lawn, so no change.
Okay. And over, if you go further left, there was an issue about, I don't know if it was about parking and/or signs there or things coming on, onto the sidewalk? Was it, what was that issue? Could you explain?
So the previously, so he has the inspection cars queue up there and it was striped right up to the curb line. So the cars would kind of encroach into the right of way, there was just a marker of start sign here. If you go by now, he's repaved that, restriped it where there's about four or five feet where he's put edge lines to the parking to promote the cars to stay off the right of way and the sign just inside the, off the right of way.
So that's been taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the sign is movable too, so.
Yeah, it, it doesn't appear that, I was down there yesterday, because I have to get a visual.
Yeah.
It doesn't help me. It does not appear like there's striping or anything, it's just, we come off of Naponton and we enter on, onto the, now, I love your business, I know you've been there a thousand years, I think it's all great, but this is the one time that we're going to get, you're going to get to make it look a little nicer. And now that blacktop is just running onto the road, I have pictures, but I had to visualize it. There's no way to queue, it's just you run off the road and you go around the, the tank.
For coming into the gas station lanes, yes, on the, where they queued up for the inspection, I know the striping's there, because I noticed it, so.
But there's no, but then the cars can't pull in for the gas station, for the gas pumps, they're gonna, they're gonna bleed out on the Naponton or on the east.
Whale? East Whale?
Ridge.
Right, what's the?
East Cross.
East Cross.
Beyond the gas station, though.
It's right on the corner.
Right, but the, the cars coming in from, if you're talking about cars coming in off of Naponton and turning in here to go to the gas pumps, there's still room here within the property for cars to go by. Now, the concern was that Mr. Now, the concern was that Mr. Shan referred to, was there had been a sign at one point advertising the inspections and saying, "Here's where the line is." That's gone, that's gone. And, and so there's room here for people to come up.
Still there.
As movable, so.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, it's movable.
But there's nothing...
We're not blocking...
There's nothing before the board with regard to traffic flow and striping on the parking lot, so we're a little off base here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we're talking about arrows and stuff, that's doable.
Well, with regard to the plantings, the actual request is before the board. Did you have any, you love talking about plantings, so.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Hearns and your argument that it's inside the fence, it's going to create, it's going to grab trash. However, how many plantings is it? Seventy-five?
Seventy-two of the creeping juniper, and that's a bunch of others.
Okay.
Forty, forty-two butterfly weeds proposed, twenty-seven wood ferns proposed, seventy-two creeping junipers proposed and approved, twenty-seven scarlet bee balm, and twenty-one black-eyed season plants.
Hundred and fifty plants?
Yeah.
I would just put it in the context to, right, these are like, almost like little saplings, that's why there's so many, because it's ground cover, so you spread it out. I just don't want people to think we have that many, like, large shrubs showing up. That's all.
So would that be a mulch bed? It's just plantings, just ground cover. It's not your underlying little bark mulch or anything like that?
Well, I think we've removed the mulch bed in favor of the sod. You know, except maybe immediately around the shrub.
What's the deepest part from the curb and the edge of the new blacktop to the fence at any point?
Ten, ten to twelve feet.
Ten to twelve feet?
I was going to say the most narrow is probably about ten feet here, and then deeper down here is close to seventeen, eighteen feet.
That's, okay, so fifteen plus down there? And you're proposing just simply open grass with irrigation?
With all of the shrubs that are called out on the plan that were called out previously.
The shrubs, and just not the ground cover?
Shrubs, trees. It's just what's low to the ground, which isn't even visible, if there are cars parked there.
Could, could we, could we compromise at all and do something for the neighbors on the corner? I mean, the housekeeping right now is, we have sixteen, eighteen tires on town property?
Those tires are there temporarily because they were doing paving.
They're not paving in the back, Mr. Hearns.
We just paved yesterday, they were there all night. They were sealing yesterday.
That's why they were moved.
Okay, that's the left.
They won't be there, they're never there, ever. They were sealing yesterday.
Okay.
So those will never be there.
Would, would it be, could, could we replace these hundred and twenty plants if we say, "Let's not..." I don't disagree, it's behind your fence, you're going to have to clean it up. Could we put something on the corner of, in front of those three parking spots? Build a bed, build a, a little planting box, put something in there to soften that edge up?
Which corner?
Yeah, which corner?
On the corner.
East cross.
The one that you've got the box on for clothes, yes.
This corner?
That we all take, we all cut the corner, and it's not delineated, and...
We can put like a, we can't dig it up, because it's all paved and it's town property, most of it. But we can put some...
How about a, how about a...
A pot, yeah, a couple of...
Like a, a brick box?
Yeah, that's doable.
That, you know, it's not, it's not cheap. I'm not saying two pots that somebody's going to knock into where the plow's going to hit. Something on the corner that you could plant something in. You're going to put three car spaces behind it.
Let me...
Mr. Chair.
It's on a very...
Yes.
Yes, Rob, what do you, the stop sign?
So, another option, or we're trying to work with you, is what's, what's between the fence and Ridge Road?
There'll be sod there, and there are some trees there now.
So, if the problem is no one will see these plantings, why don't we put them in the strip along Ridge Road, along the front?
On the outside of the fence, yes.
On the outside of the fence, so everyone?
Yeah, I mean, it's a problem for the point of view of maintenance. And depending upon the plantings, they're just going to catch trash. Juniper catches trash. I had them, hated them. But they catch leaves, they catch trash. We've never called for anything really out there, except for the shrubs at the corner. The shrubs here, this, this is outside of the fence. And that was called for, and that's what we're doing. That was part of the original decision. If you're talking about over here, the idea is to dig it up, put down the loom, and then put the sod down on top of it. And that's easy enough to keep that mowed. Is that what you're asking, Tim, we're about putting some of this ground cover there?
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not a landscape architect or anything. I'm just trying to preserve the, the idea of having all these plantings and to keep it pretty and to conform to our bylaw.
I'd say, but I was never going to have any of those plantings. So now you talk about putting them up here?
Yes.
Good question. So a difference from this plan than the one that was approved? The one that was approved showed a significant number of plantings on the other side of the fence at the rear of the property. That's not shown on this plan.
Right? Color plan? That's a black and white from the approved. This is the, Sarah, that's the one that had the notation of two-eight SPR comments in the revision block?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this one.
Yeah.
The new, you know, two. The new one. Yeah. The fence still ran to the line? Do you think they're all there? No, I'm, I'm suddenly worried my color plan is not accurate to the block plan, so I apologize.
I'll pull up the plan that was approved here, just so we can all look at it.
This one I don't look at. And then if you have the black and white plan that was submitted also, that might make it clear. Apologize, my color plan lost those shrubs. It was not our intent.
So if you look here, this line with the little squares is the fence.
That's right.
So see all those plantings to the rear of the fence?
Correct. Do, um...
And then this was the landscape plan that you submitted with respect to this application. Okay, it's the same.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
I was thinking, why didn't I see this last week when I was reviewing the plan?
Yeah, so I apologize for that.
Your color rendering is...
Yeah, the color rendering is off.
Okay.
We want to go with what was submitted in black and white.
Okay.
Because I apologize for that.
It's the, the shrubs and trees, we're not proposing to change those. It's just what's on the ground.
Joe. I, I agree, I know that the junipers can be messy. They attract, they're like trash magnets, in one sense. So I can see where we, if we had a nice lawn, soted, it would work. And I just want to point out that I was asking about the front here before, just to make sure when someone comes in for a beneficial change, that they've taken some of the steps that we asked them to do before we, I just want to, I'm glad that you did that, so. I was afraid you hadn't, so I just want, that's why I asked about the front over to the left. But I can see where a lawn probably would be neater in this instance. For, for my part, I just think there's a maintenance argument that can be made for pretty much any landscaping plan. It's, I understand this particular argument probably has some validity, given the nature of the plants and the nature of the business, that maybe there is an excess of trash that could blow its way in there. But I'm just, I have to say that anybody could argue that maintaining a certain planting scheme would be difficult, so, anyway. But beyond that, if this is entirely contained within the fence, all the changes you're talking about are within the fence, within the, you're in the parking lot.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right, we do not propose anything, any changes outside of the fence.
And all of the shrubs and tree plantings will remain undisturbed?
That's right. Only what's on the ground. Now, I don't know if we adequately answered the question or the suggestion over here. I think we went off, but...
With regard to the parking lot?
No, this was about the, something in the corner of East Cross?
Oh, Rob's question about planting further down the fence?
Rob wanted to bounce them outside of the fence, so the neighbors looked at them. I wanted to, I, may I?
Yes.
One of the, this is a different landscape plan than two years ago, three years ago, right? We beefed up the landscape plan?
The requirements of the bylaw.
The requirements of the bylaw we beefed up since...
Yes.
Okay, so it's a year, tell me, years?
Well, we now require flowering, annuals and perennialals and...
So because we were running into this problem all over town, again, I think one of the things when we were changing this, this many years ago, it was a negotiating thing. Every piece of property is different, this is cars, I get it. But it's a negotiating thing, so you're asking us to eliminate a lot of plants, which I don't disagree. Where else can we put them?
Debbie?
Mm-hmm.
You, you were talking about a compromise. I, I can go along with some sort of compromise, maybe it wouldn't be those exact plants, maybe there's a few more of different type of bush we could add, as opposed to the junipers and the, all the ground cover. Maybe there's some, some bush that does give us some color, too. You know, not just an evergreen, that we could have a mix.
I think, Mr. Chairman, to speak to those two comments.
Sure.
Unless I've misread this. There are no arborite.
And in, in this type of location, I would take arborite.
But let me say, there are flowering plants here. Rhododendron.
I love those.
Two kinds of rhododendron, hydrangea.
Mount laurel.
I'm sorry, there is an arborite, there is some arborite in there, I apologize, I missed that. But not a lot. There are eastern white pine that we're putting in trees, mountain laurel, summer sweet, New Jersey tea, basswood, and American elm. So those are, some of those are flowering at different stages of the year.
But as you said, they're inside the fence that unless we're there doing our car, we're not going to see. And I go past that about twenty-five times a week. I would love to see something that I'm going to have to look at on the corner, in front of that fence. Trade me.
So...
Trade me those plants in the front.
I was just talking with William, you know, adding more shrubs down this line, I think he was open to, and then planter boxes of some kind here, as was suggested. You know, there's curb stops here, the curb stops are on here. William said he was open to do as well, so.
Lawn doesn't block the view from out of East Cross.
Thank you on that, yeah. It's always challenging, come to his corner, like...
Sarah, what do you think?
I think there's two objectives that drive these bylaw requirements. One is kind of the minimizing the visual intrusion and maintaining visual compatibility with the area, not just to residential butters necessarily, but to motorists and pedestrians who are passing by and looking into the property. I think that's one issue that could be resolved by some of these changes that you're proposing. The other one is just a simple comparison, side by side, of sod and a mix of the native plantings that were originally approved here. The mix of native plantings are better in keeping with the low-impact development standards and design standards that this board tries to promote. And we're, in fact, driving a lot of the more recent changes to our bylaw, especially for Lindsay, who is concerned. Grass requires a heck of a lot more water. It requires fertilizer, it requires pesticides. All of these things to maintain something that is tidy and nice-looking. But native species are more drought-resistant, they require less of all of those things. They provide assistance in stormwater infiltration at a greater capacity than sod. And they also have added benefits, like supporting pollinators. So I think there are benefits to the plan as originally proposed that are not sufficiently mitigated with planter boxes on the corner. Although visually, that's, you know, it looks nice. I would encourage the board to kind of think about all of that, and...
Mr. Chair.
To me, those are separate issues.
I, if we have an issue with creeping juniper, which I can understand, perhaps we could substitute that for another native species or something more workable for you. But things like wood ferns and these other, these other plantings, if we were to move them towards the front of the property, where they, they would take up some more of this grass space and create a more environmentally friendly landscape, then that's what, that's what the goal is of the bylaw.
So, excuse me. So when you say move some of them forward, which area are you referring to?
So...
That's what I understand.
Where, as the plan is now, we're seeing all the, the ground cover behind the parking spaces between that and the rear fence.
Right.
To basically...
And some along the side, too.
And some along the side.
But all within the fence?
All within the fence, but, and I'm not sure if, if we even want to do this, but I'm just spitballing here. If we were to move some of those plantings towards the front, right on the main street there, underneath the, the trees...
So swapping the lawn that's proposed on the Nippon City Street along that right of way, making that the proposed perennial ground cover, and then the sod where you're proposing that, back in the interior of the lawn, is that what you're...
Yeah, that would, if, if there's, there's no fence... Am I correct, is there no fence in the very front, under those two large trees?
Correct.
So that wouldn't trap as much trash or debris if there's no fence there to block the lens? It would be, it would be more usable.
Out front was always lawn, on the approved plan, but then...
Right.
So that, that idea was acceptable there. You're saying you would change that to some of this, these, some of these native plants that were referred to?
That you don't want to put in the back. That you don't want to put in the back.
Well, there's some we don't want to put on the site area, like the juniper.
To Sarah's point, juniper doesn't take water, it covers the ground, it holds the earth. But that blows.
If you have an alternative to propose, I'm sure the board would be open to hearing it.
And it can create a mess. Juniper can.
And, and the lawn's going to be dead from the snow, the ice and the snow. I mean, you know, it's a living thing, we have to, we, we, what, we're trying to make it look pretty. We can both argue that this is going to catch garbage and this is going to die, and let's, let's just fix it, and let's fix it. Everybody's looking down, everybody's looking down.
So, I'm sorry, I have a trouble here, here's the fence. So you're proposing or suggesting that we, we take some of the plants who are on the approved plan, move them to the front of the site, along Nippon City Street, get rid of the lawn that was there? And then what do we do in the other areas inside the fence?
I was thinking substitute one for one, if, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but one for one, substitute what's in the back, put it in the front and on the side, on the outside of the fence. And then you'll have your lawn towards the back... on the outside of the fence. And then you'll have your lawn towards the back against inside the fence. So if any trapped debris is in there from the wind, you could just collect it and throw it out.
And then outside of the fence, we're going to have this stuff outdated?
Correct. And also, if, if you had a, a better substitution that was a native species for creeping juniper, if you had another alternative that you wanted to suggest?
Do you mind if I point out?
Sure.
So, in the approved plan, these areas right here, where Mark does perennial ground cover, right? And you're proposing that this now is up in front of the shrubs and bushes and trees, which I'm not supposed to change. Only what's on the ground in front of it. This was always approved to be lawn. It was proposed to be lawn. It's shown the plant as lawn. If I understand it, it sounds like what Rob is suggesting is this be the same mix of perennial ground cover that was proposed originally from the interior of the lot. This becomes the mix of native species in exchange for allowing this to be included to sod, correct?
Correct. And if it, if it overflows onto the side as well on the outside of the fence, so be it. Yes, and even further back, however it fits in there on the outside.
Break this up, yes.
That's the space he's got in the back. And that's going to be one, two trees. It's just going to be a...
Mr. Chairman, what is it?
I mean, that's a big space for just trees. Junipers, they're not going to be able to lay...
Is that, that's, that's the back?
That's this corner right here.
This is, this is...
Right here.
Yep. That is that. And that's a big space to just have grass on. But he also wants it so we can store car parts on it.
But...
Right. But he's got time for them in the back.
But over here, up, this plant here, is this, what, in the back, are they still saying they're going to have trees and?
Yeah.
They're going to have...
So they're going to have that, except they're not going to have the creeping stuff.
Right.
All right. I think there's some questions here. Joe raised a question. He was, so I guess we can point this out. Debbie has a photograph that we're all benefiting from looking at, which shows in sort of real life what this looks like. So I believe Joe was just making sure that these plantings, there's going to be, how many trees on that back strip? It looks like, from what I can see, three?
Yep.
And then what are the smaller bushes? Thank you. I know it's on the chart, but my eyes are failing me here. All right. RM five, what's RM five?
Rhododendron.
Rose boy rhododendron.
Rhododendron.
Okay.
And there's five of those. That's the number.
That's over there. So if you go down the line, there's two types of, two sets of rhododendrons there.
And we're not going to be putting cars up there, right?
I'm kind of nervous that's just going to store snow.
Well, there's always going to be...
That's the dirt.
Yes, that's this right here. That's a lot of space.
Well, no, is that where it was designated?
Trees and bushes.
Well, that's a good question. And where are you going to store the snow?
We want to take the bushes out.
He's got the whole lot.
In the whole lot in the back.
Okay.
Could you guys, you know, take turns to make sure that everybody can hear you?
Sorry. We got to focus. All right. So, let's reorganize. Would that, I think Rob hit the floor.
Would that be something you guys would be amenable to?
I kind of lost track of what that is.
So, we would, we would take all the ground cover towards the rear, inside the property, bring that towards the front, along Nippon Street, and then overflowing on Ridge Road, whatever volume area it takes up. Basically, one-for-one from the rear to the front and the side.
May I ask, what about shrubs on that front area instead of just lawn?
I'm not a landscape architect, but I, I don't believe, I believe we're just thinking about the smaller ground cover.
I, I understand that. But those also fall within the, I believe they fall within the native species that Sarah mentioned.
But you wouldn't, you didn't mention you weren't removing those?
No, adding shrubs along the front. If you're concerned about covering that front area instead of having it lawn, we could put some shrubs in there. Some of these shrubs do flower at times. Put shrubs in there instead of, they're going to be more visible than ground cover that you may not see as you drive by.
I'm, I'm just concerned about visibility along the front of the street with anything more than, than ground cover, ferns, or, or whatever we've got listed on our, our plant schedule, which was approved.
I, I know that, yeah. I know it was.
Which is a perfect place there for junipers. It'll hold the dirt. It'll be under the trees. It doesn't need a lot of sun.
And Mr. Bamber's suggesting we look at the other plants that were called out on the schedule and substitute those for the juniper. They're different sizes, aren't they? I mean, the ground might have different planting numbers, but as all ground covers.
Yeah. If it's, if it's something that you have against junipers, which I understand does catch whatever's floating by.
I'm sure I'll hear from the juniper society.
They're out there.
What, what is the valley for?
So, I, I'm wondering, as far as this discussion is concerned, is this something that time might benefit to move to continue this? Or is, I, I, I'm not sure where this is, where, where, if we're arriving at a, any sort of solution.
I think we're at a point where they could either agree to compromise on, on moving some of the vegetation and coming up with...
Sure. So, for my part, what I'm understanding this to be, Rob's suggestion is not necessarily coming from a place that the board doesn't like the lawn on, on the Nippon Street side of the things, but rather the, to, to ensure that the ground cover, the native species that, for the very reasons Sarah described, are incorporated somewhere in this plan, right? Is that fair to say? And that's why you suggested doing it where it is?
Yeah. Basically, a one-for-one ground cover. Put it somewhere on the site. And I see an open spot on Nippon Street, and I see an open spot on Ridge Road.
So I guess that's the question to the applicant, if, if there's any room for...
So, we could put, if we put the, say, the juniper or something in place of it, outside of the fence on Ridge Road, that's what you're referring to?
Or, or Nippon Street, Ridge or Nippon Street, yes. The...
And?
You're most likely looking at, real quick, you don't have enough room on Nippon Street to take all of that ground cover and just put it there. So it would most likely take up Nippon Street and probably half of Ridge Road going back.
And the back area, excuse me, the back area would?
Would be grass, trees, and the smaller...
The shrubs that we have.
The shrubs, yeah.
So no change to anything except what was originally shown as ground cover on the plant?
Correct.
That's what I'm...
Just different locations. So, calculating perhaps the square footage of what was proposed to be that perennial ground cover that you initially drafted out and comparing with the...
I think I had a question for you.
Do you have a question? I was just thinking of another option. I think we could go with larger, the bushes, like the, you mentioned hydrangeas, you mentioned, let's see, rhododendrons and different things like that. I, I don't know why we're, I don't know if we really would have to stick with the creeping, uh...
Juniper?
Juniper. I'd be, I'd rather see something larger out front. And it, it would be certainly better looking. And I don't think it would be in anyone's way as far as sight, because you've got trees there anyway. So if you've got to come out of Ridge, or if you're going along Nippon, I don't think it would be in your way, you know, as far as sightlines. And I think you could fulfill it with, with the larger bushes as opposed to the junipers.
That was the question I asked. And as far as sightline, if you look where the crosswalk is, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. Sarah had a comment.
I just want to be clear. The ground cover was not just juniper. Juniper is one of the five.
Yeah, I think everybody's appreciative.
That was in the original plan, right?
So, if I may...
It's not just juniper.
I'm sorry. So it's five, they're saying there's five species of ground cover, juniper being one of the five?
Yes.
And I believe in this conversation, it's been suggested that there might be some alternate, alternative option to the juniper, given the issues with its ability to catch debris?
Correct.
Okay. Well, actually, I just want to ask a question to Joe's point. If your proposal, if Joe's suggestion is to use larger shrubs on the Nippon Street side, where there is no fence, they would effectively also screen out some of those cars, right? It would serve as a visual barrier, which may be more aesthetically pleasing, right?
Yes.
So, to be clear, so what Mr. Shan was asking is, do we put in here some of those shrubs?
Yep.
As far as the sight distance going out of Ridge Road, the crosswalk for Ridge Road is here. The property line is here, and the plantings would be inside of that property line. So I think if somebody were driving out of here, they'd be here by the crosswalk looking down the street. And we're already proposing trees. I don't know that that's going to affect the sight distance very much, because you're sitting here looking down Nippon Street to the people coming, say, that way. If you're coming out, that's if you're coming up intending to turn left, intending to turn right, you've got a clear shot here anyway. So, that might be, from our point of view, might be preferable to have the shrubs there. And you make a point that it might shield the parking area from the cars and pedestrians going by. I, I don't know whether we can resolve this tonight, because we, none of us apparently is a landscape architect. But...
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion?
Rob.
Yeah, please?
Well, I'm sorry. I forget who got it first.
Rob, go.
Rob and then Derek.
Can I make a suggestion or an ask is that we, if we have two ideas, it seems like we have two ideas here. One's to keep the ground cover wherever you put it. One's to change the idea of what's required. Can we have two separate plans possibly showing what's required by the bylaw? Putting the, putting the ground cover on those strips like we've been talking about, and then an alternative plan if you'd like. But I, I do think we would have issues with sightlines coming off of Edge Road onto that. That's probably why there's only big trees there with, you know, a single trunk to start with. But if we could, that's just an ask, if we could have something drawn up instead of, and if it's two different ideas, maybe, maybe that would be something we could go off of.
I, I'm, I'm not sure if you're looking for a response or suggestion.
Didn't want to talk, but I think...
Yeah, let's let Derek. Derek, what was your comments or question?
Mount laurels, do you know how big you're planning to have those? Because we have some in our yard, and they're taking forever to grow up. Which is kind of good that they're going to be not all that big and bushy because of the, the line of sight at that corner. And I'm not a big fan of the creeping juniper, and you gave a lot of those points of why I don't like this. I wouldn't mind personally to really minimize the amount of juniper that you're going to include, but replace it with more flowering plants, ones that will attract bees and butterflies, and have those in the back.
In, in the back?
Yeah. And, and, and I like the idea of having along the front the, the shrubs there. And it gives that visual blockage for the, the cars.
And we would have to pick from, I mean, determine the appropriate species theoretically? I mean, I think it's a given that all of the species suggested are appropriate for the climate, location, and all that. The question is, do we change that mix to eliminate the horrible juniper that the public seems to like?
Do we have, do you have a landscaper that's going to do this work?
Landscaper? We need a landscape architect to prepare the plan.
Right.
But a landscaper doing the work?
Install.
Both. You're the landscaper architect, correct?
I'm a civil engineer, but we had a landscape architect to plan, but she's not here tonight.
So, attorney here, and you started, it sounded like you're making a suggestion that maybe going back some, some time would help, or was I misunderstanding?
I had to ask my client. He's in the middle of a construction project.
Pause would be the same for the, oh, just put everything on pause for landscape. Let me see what the same for next two weeks, month, whatever the next hearing is. So...
Or you just do what was approved.
Well, I understand that. So if we came back at the next meeting and showed you an alternative, or Mr. Bamber was asking for what?
To take all of the ground cover from the rear of the property.
And the side.
Bring it towards the front lawn with the two trees along Nippon Street and Ridge Road, maintain the number and species of ground cover.
So show that as a possibility. And then the alternatives, show...
The alternative was bushes and shrubs in front of the parking, which might, in my opinion, block sightlines. But I don't know if that's something that I can determine.
And you determine what the sightline would be from Ridge Road?
Oh, yeah.
So you would suggest we come back with one, the, the plan where we still have one on the site, the, the different plants, including the juniper, put it down in these other spots?
With the, with the...
Trading lawn in the front for lawn in the back?
Yep.
Or we come in trying to show shrubbery in place of some of that ground cover, where it would go?
Which I'm not a fan of, but that seems to be the opinion of some members of the board.
Do you have any comment or question? Would we come back June 5th?
What is the...
Yeah.
That's the next meeting?
That's the next meeting.
And if we could get it and we could look at it before our June 5th meeting, that would be nice.
Yes. I, I'm sorry. I didn't hit on...
June 5th is a fairly full agenda, but I think if this, if the board can give you some certainty about what kind of a plant they'd be looking for, and it would be relatively quick, I think we would have the time to fit you in. Otherwise, you'd be looking, you know, June 26th, I want to say, is the next one.
We'd rather get this done sooner than later. We would have to, and you're suggesting that we would come back with alternative, two, two, two alternative plans. And I understand Mr. Bamber is not enamored of some aspects of plan number two. He's more enamored of plan number one as described.
You'd be correct.
I understand that.
So I believe, yeah, that's out there. Anybody for a motion to continue this to June 5th?
I love that. We will squeeze them in if we could be succinct, and if we could all have it to look at a little before Friday at 7:00.
Is there a motion on the floor?
A motion to continue until June 5th or 6th?
5th.
5th.
Do we need a time?
At 7:00.
Can we give them the first shot?
7:00 PM, is there?
No, no, no. Everything's scheduled for 7:00.
Oh, everything's scheduled for 7:00.
Yeah.
Second? Is there a second? All right. Motion to second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. All opposed? Path 4-0.
Continued, just to be clear, that was continued to June 5th at 7:00 PM here.
Here.
275 CrossFit. And we'll work on the suggestion here, the suggestions, and see if we can accomplish something.
I know it seems to go on ad nauseam, but I think if we get a better project for you and for your customers, that would be a good thing.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. So, thank you. So moving on to the next agenda item. Next up is a request for major project special permit modification, 83 Moore Street, Neil Hanson Tagg Bond, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, David Hearn Jr., attorney, David Dupree, 83 Moore Street LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I almost forgot about this. David Hearn Jr., 30 Wall Post right on behalf of 83 Moore Street LLC. That's the Nobotspace Center. Space Center. I think, Mr. Chairman, that this has been rescheduled, it was a question about notice, and so it has been re-announced for June 5th.
No, it was re-announced for June 26th.
Oh, it was re-announced for 26th?
Re-announced for June 26th.
You did.
I was aware of that, I just didn't know if we had to call this for the record.
This is, this public hearing, I think, is defunct because of procedural error in the hearing.
Then that, that's that.
It was re-announced and overpaid.
So it was for the, we had talked about, one point I thought it was already in for the 5th and then we just continued to the 26th.
You may be right, I think we advertised it in the hearing.
I think the ad had already gone into the 5th by the time I said to Sarah, we would prefer the 26th if Mr. Dupree did not be available.
So it will open on the 5th and if the applicant wishes a continuance to 26th to ensure availability, that will procedurally be in order.
I just wasn't even sure if it had to be called tonight, so it's a nullity for tonight and it will be called for the first time on June 5th.
I think that's correct.
Very well.
And we'll see then, and as I say, I think that we will be then asking for a continuance to June 26th, so that may clear the deck a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so the next item up is the appointment of a board, the planning board representative to the master plan steering committee.
I would like to make a nomination.
You would?
I would like to make a nomination.
Who you nominate?
I would like to nominate Mr. Bamber.
Is there any other nomination?
Is he smiling? I'll second that then.
Is there some discussion on this? I'm not sure if anybody else wished to, Sarah?
If I could make a suggestion?
Yes.
I know that Derek had also indicated interest in serving on the steering committee. I think because there are two members that may be interested, it would be beneficial to maybe wait till, take a vote on this until you have a full board.
I agree, and we had discussed this.
We don't have a full board because we can't vote.
Mr. Petrowski is not here. So.
I think it would be helpful to have.
I agree.
Bernie available for.
Yep. So with that, is there a motion to continue this matter to June 5th? Or is that too far?
If we have time.
Or do you want to go?
It's not a public hearing, so you can table this.
Oh, you can just table it and read, okay.
I'm all for that, that sounds like a good idea.
So we don't need to take a motion to table it?
Right.
All right, so this matter has been tabled. So, thank you, although your nomination's noted.
Okay.
All right.
An approval of minutes.
All right, so the next item up is.
We could use both of them.
Yeah, can we do two?
Extra spot.
The next agenda item is the approval of minutes from our April 10th, 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Last, I actually would like to just congratulate Holly Jones for her accepting the position as Assistant Director of Community Development, formerly, a position formerly occupied by Sarah, and I think that it makes for a wonderful team down there, so offer her our congratulations. So with that, do we have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. All opposed? No.
Aye.
Good night.